We are gonna adjourn the special meeting and we are gonna go right into our regular workshop So that is gonna drop us to five A. Resolution Pasco Facilities District Interlocal Agreement Amendment Regarding Legal Counsel Services. And we're gonna have Director. Did I skip something on that? Oh, yes, verbal reports from Council. Sorry about that. I know we have an athlete among us. I know he would probably like to to mention how rigorous that was. I was actually quite shocked to see he was able to swim, bicycle, and ride. I know I couldn't have done it, but anyway, I guess so. Let's start off with Mayor Portem.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I attended the BF Cog meeting on Friday and just a couple of things from that. They laid out their top six regional transportation projects for the year and I am grateful the Road 76 overpass did make number six. I was slightly disappointed, though, in a list of priorities that it was number six for the whole region, when in fact, it it would be alleviating the highest volume traffic area in the entire Tri-Cities. And also, the TAC, the Technical Advisory Committee, on another issue, actually scored it with the highest points in a earlier kind of rating session. So grateful to be involved, grateful that our partners across the area also see it as a priority. And also worth noting, out of that meeting, too, is I found out our very own Director Sarah was just named the Chairperson of the TAC, which is really quite an honor, speaks of her expertise and also her colleagues recognizing her as a leader within what is really kind of a highly prestigious group of engineers like herself and other directors across the area. So good job to her.
Outstanding. Always glad to see city staff be recognized for the hard work they do. So thank you for that report as well.
Yes, sir. And also, i- in my nonofficial capacity, on Saturday night, my oldest daughter and I flew to Phoenix, Arizona, to take part in the memorial service for Charlie Kirk Sunday morning. We sat with one of our state legislators from Eastern Washington and his family. In the speech, Vice President of the United States called Charlie Kirk "a hero to the United States of America" and "he is a martyr for the Christian faith." I'll be honest with you, Mr. Mayor, I don't know of another instance in American history where nearly the entire cabinet, plus the President and the Vice President, all spoke at the same time and place. It was very surreal and really an unprecedented of event to attend. There's been lots of questions to why his life, his death, and memorial service have garnered more attention than others. And I think it's important to the note that Mr. Kirk would be the first to say, "We are all image bearers of the Almighty and all lives have equal and infinite value." The reason this had so much attention is simply because of the influence that he had. The size of the event riled, rivaled what we would see for heads of state. I especially appreciated Charlie Kirk's words for engaging young men. In a speech at the event, the Secretary of State Marco Rubio highlighted this by saying, "I think we remember him for constantly saying, 'You want to live a productive life? Get married, start a family, love your country.' These are powerful messages," he said. J.D. Vance echoed that, our own Vice President, a similar sentiment in his speech when he said, "Charlie brought the truth that marriage and family were the highest callings, far more important than any job or title in government." I think this is relevant to us here because so many of the problems we deal with as a city, as a city and a society, is because men aren't fulfilling these basic duties. Back in the old days, boys would become men, but in our modern times, we've kind of created this, this thing called adolescence where they're not really boys anymore, they're they're not really men, and they're just kind of hovering. And if that's not bad enough, we actually even have a delayed adolescence where we're just taking that to the nth degree. Another theme that was highlighted yesterday was brought out by by the life of Charlie Kirk is that God is God in government. While I know hearing those two words in the same sentence gives some people an allergic reaction, it's foundational to American ideals and principles. This idea is very misunderstood by many, and even from our own diocese last week, it was mistakenly said that there's no separation of church and state in the Constitution. Not only, or that there should be, not only is that the these four into our family, our founding documents of this nation, save the First Amendment, some of these documents, like the Declaration of Independence, even read like a religious text. Further along in the speech, Vice President Vance illustrated this idea as he was talking about Kirk's dedication to civil discourse. The Vice President said, "We always did need less government, but what Charlie understood and infused into his movement is that we also needed a lot more God. Not government as a substitute for faith, but government as a tool to protect the God-given rights of families, to defend the unborn, to restore moral order." Mr. Mayor, I'm thankful for the opportunity to share the experience with one of my children. I'm also thankful for the faith in our Lord Jesus Christ that Charlie Kirk had and how it led him to engage the younger generation in civil dialogue while challenging them to be better people and better citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's move on to Councilwoman Baras.
Thank you. On local news, if you're watching this Saturday, the Mid-Columbia Duck Race did take place and Ms. Kuriel was the winner of this year's 2025 Toyota Corolla Cross. So congratulations to Ms. Kuriel for that, for participating in the duck race and thank you all. Thank you, the community that helped purchase those duck race tickets. Those funds do go back into the community to help other organizations, nonprofits. And then on Sunday was the second triathlon in coordination with Visit Tri-Cities, the Ironman Triathlon. I was there as a volunteer at the Beer Garden. I'm not ashamed to say it. I was at the Beer Garden having fun, welcoming guests from Italy, Germany, Canada, throughout the states, from Mexico, Central America, all over the world, really. But I did see a very familiar face. Mr. Peter Harbster came by, did not know that he was in the, in the competing. So congratulations to Mr. Harbster and to every athlete that came out into the Tri-Cities, into Richland, but also contributed to our sales tax. So thank you again for coming by. That's all I have.
All right. Well, thank you for that report and yeah, let's move on to Councilman Harbster. Hopefully he'll give us a play-by-play how it went.
You don't want to hear that. Let's see, a Hanford Communities Board meeting on Thursday last week. That was a lot of activity leading up to that with federal government flirting with the idea of not funding the next step in the cleanup process, which is moving forward with the vitrification that's been in the works for 35 years or so. That is moving forward, that was signed, and that begins, I believe, in October. Port of Benton is hosting their fourth Vert Equal Innovation Cluster Clean Energy Convention featuring keynote remarks from ECA Executive Director Seth Kirschenberg. That's Wednesday, October 15th, from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. at the Port of Benton for those interested. And then we also just discussed monthly updates from Brian Harkins, Acting Deputy Manager of Process, processes at the site and especially the path forward for the waste vitrification. Secondly, on Friday, attended the Tri-Deck Follow-Up Meeting for Shrubstep along with Director Mattson, and that is now being led by Representative Connors on behalf of Tri-Deck. One of the items of discussion that I've been saying from the beginning that everyone else finally seemed to get on board with is that Fish and Wildlife is not a regulatory agency, they're simply a commenting agency. And so the, they can provide comments. Now, where the requirement does come in is that the Growth Management Act requires cities planning under GMA to consider critical areas. So you can't just completely ignore everything related to Shrubstep and Brigis Hawk and Burrowing Owl. And so the path forward that, if I remember correctly, was Director Mattson's recommendation was that the four cities and two counties in our area work together to create a uniform critical areas ordinance. It's great timing because I think every city is updating their comp plan right now. That way, we've all got the same science that we're working with and makes it harder for Fish and Wildlife to disagree with, with their own biologists. And so what always ends up being is biologist against biologist, trying to determine what the best science is. And Fish and Wildlife can always kind of get a leg up because City Kennewick might have something different than what we have, or Benton County might have something different, and it's not uniform. So it'll be a lengthy process to get there over the next year and a half or so, but that's the path forward. And I'll, hopefully, we get to a spot where Fish and Wildlife is at least somewhat satisfied and development can continue inside the UGA. Just as by way of example, Edgar Brown Stadium is listed as Shrubstep Habitat on Fish and Wildlife's mapping system. So it's important that we get the, our critical areas ordinance updated with everybody else because Fish and Wildlife is simultaneously working on their own update to their best science. So sort of a race to see who can come up with the best science first, so to speak. And then, yes, thank you for mentioning participating in the Ironman this weekend. Next year, I'll be a volunteer with Ms. Baras. The one thing that was cool to note throughout the course was all the local agencies involved, including Pasco Police. I think Pasco Fire was there as well. It's a massive undertaking for our community and does generate around $7 million in revenue. And so it was really cool to see and yeah, looking forward to volunteering next year and not, not kick them on, but thanks.
All right. Well, thanks for representing council on that. I guess the question would be, which is harder, being on the Ironman or being on council as far as the challenging?
It's a very good question. Ask me in two years.
All right. Well, let's move on to our newest member, Councilman Joe.
Sorry, Peter. This thing only has two buttons. Now I know which one not to push. You know, my orientation was Friday, and I just wanted to say how impressed I am with our city staff. Thank you for, I was just impressed with your competence and your professionalism. Thank you so much. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you for that report. Make sure you hit the button again so you're not on overtime. Okay? Thank you for that. And now we will jump to number five, and which the first one is Resolution Pasco Facilities District Interlocal Agreement Amendment Regarding Legal Counsel Services. And now we're gonna talk to Director Jesse Rice.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm got double duty here running the slides, so I'm reading my report. But this is one of two reports this evening related to the Pasco Public Facilities District. The first one is related to the current interlocal agreement that is between the City of Pasco and the Public Facilities Board, Public Facilities District. And that was actually renewed in 2000, let me check my dates here, sorry about that, 2003, I believe, to help support the construction of the Aquatic Center. And then the ILA, it indicated several services the city would provide. That's not even our size. Would provide during that time, which also included legal services. And as you're aware, those legal services were provided by the current law office, who has given notice of the end-of-the-year service. All right, good. Looks like we're good. So with, and with the termination of those services, the PPFD Board will, is required to obtain additional legal services. So they're here this, I'm here this evening to ask to amend the ILA to give those an option that they either may continue to use city-provided legal services or our city attorney, if they so choose to do so, or they may go out to bid to recruit their own legal services. And with that, I would ask, are there any questions?
Do we have any questions? By council, let's start with Councilman Harbster.
My only question is, are, either way, are the, is the expense of council paid through the tax revenue? Is paying for the whole project?
Are we related to the project or to the legal services?
The legal services. Or the legal services for the project covered by the tax revenue?
Legal services for the board as well as legal services for the project are covered by the taxes, yes. Two separate things, but same, yes.
Thanks.
And I'm also here to augment that request. Just note that we have been served very capably by Mr. Ferguson. We are separate entities, though, and there have been a couple of cases of where we've questioned whether or not we needed to get some separate attorneys. So it's something that we have contemplated, and with the change that's occurring with your city attorney services, we figure it's a good time to ask to do the separate, since the PFD is now a standalone organization and working on its project. So it just makes a little bit more practical sense to have separate attorneys at this point.
Okay. Well, thanks for the clarification. Do we have any comments or any other questions? Are you looking for?
Just, Mr. Mayor, the only thing I would add is that unfortunately, there was a little miscommunication in terms of, from our office, and I apologize to Debbie, but with the, the changes were supposed to be highlighted in the draft that you have, and it looks like they were. We, there was some confusion about whether there were comments in there, but they were actually edits. And anyway, long and short of it is, those didn't get put in there, but I will go over just real quick the, the two changes because I just want to make sure you're aware of it in the ILA. And, and also, just so you know, the, the way that this is historically worked is that there has been, obviously, there's, there are two separate municipal corporations. And so there hasn't, but there hasn't been any conflict because there has never been, well, there's, there's been one or two times and there's had, other outside council has had to be involved. But rarely is there, has there been historically any, quote, adverse positions related to the two organizations. And so it's, it's worked out really well. At this point, though, obviously, because, and you'll see in the next item, things are starting to, to really grow, that it's, it's gonna be, there's gonna be a situation where it's gonna, it's gonna get harder and harder to make that argument that there's not competing interest or that, and not to say that it's adversarial, but there are potentially adverse decisions or consequences to some of the decisions. And so it just makes sense from a, a conflict standpoint, from an attorney's perspective, to have those be two different people, so that there's, there's, it's clear what the line are. But for example, in this case, if there's, if, if this is what both parties want, then there is no conflict. Now, all this, if, if the, the board or the, the council decides that, you know, no, we think that we need to keep this, and then the board, of course, is trying to find some way to further negotiate it, then, then that would be adverse at that point. So, but at this point, it's, there is no adverse position to, to either party, so it's worked out. But I think it's gonna get more and more difficult to, to do that going forward. Not that it would be adversarial, I could say, but that it would be, the interests would be different. E- each party would have different interests, and that's a problem from an attorney's perspective. So just real quick, I will just walk you through the couple of change, or the, the couple of changes that we have in there, if you'll go, if you, if you have the part open. One of the things that we, it's perenned to, under Section 2, where it says, it previously said, "The city attorney shall serve as the attorney for the district unless a conflict arises and the district will have to," sorry, I'm trying to read the, "will have to provide, obtain separate legal counsel." Now, the proposed change is the city attorney may serve as the attorney for the district or the district will have the option to contract their own legal services. This would ensure the district continued legal representation regardless of future city attorney availability. So, so there's that change. And then the only other change is under Section 5 Term of the Agreement. The initial term of the agreement shall commence on the first day of, and it used to say January 2023, now it says October 25, and terminate on the 30th day of September 2026, or when the certificate of occupancy is received for the facility or an updated ILA replaces this current ILA, whichever is sooner. So those are just the, the major change. And then, of course, obviously, the, the change in city manager signature. But other than that, those are the, the basic changes. So it just gives them, the board, a chance to pursue other legal counsel if they decide that that's what they want to do.
All right. Thanks for the clarification. Again, I have no problem if you has one of your own legal counsel. Let's go with Councilwoman Baras.
This is a question for you, Matt. Have you decided whether you're gonna continue with the?
Well, what we will be required to do has been shared by our capable attorney over the years, is that we will have to go through a competitive bid process. So it's my hope that you all agree to this, in the updated, this, this minor change to the ILA. So then I put, publish an RF, RFQ or RFP, Request for Proposal or Qualifications, and go through an evaluation process. Presumably, Mr. Ferguson would reply to that. There may be others as well. We'll do an evaluation team and pick the most qualified candidate for it.
All right. Mr. Ferguson, did you have something else?
Oh, I'm sorry.
All right. Looks like we're done with that part. Let's roll on to, do we have anybody in the audience that wants to, I guess?
I think there's a second part to it. Since I'm here, and it's been a bit of time, I wanted to give you a little bit of an update on the facility and to show you a cou- couple of pictures and a couple of details. I, it's, I'm trying to remember when I met you last. I also know you have a new, new council member, and so welcome aboard and congratulations.
It still need to transition to the next topic on the agenda.
Oh, I'm.
So you're just a little bit ahead. So, so yeah, I guess I'd wrap this topic up by saying staff would recommend the approval of the updated ILA so that the Public Facilities District can go out and recruit for new legal services so that we can move forward in the future. And if so, we'll bring this resolution back to you next week on consent agenda for approval or additional information as needed.
Okay. Do you need any feedback from council? I'm for it as far as.
Yeah, if everybody's okay as presented, it'll be on consent agenda next week. Thank you.
Okay. And then anybody in the audience like to comment on this? Going once, going twice, going three times? Okay, well, let's move on to B, which is Public, Pasco Public Facilities Aquatic Facility Construction Updates with Management Operations Request. And now we're gonna go to Mr. Matt Watkins.
Thank you, Mr. Rice and Mr. Millie, too. Process is very important, so it's good to know that somebody's running this, this meeting and it's not me. So thank you. Little, little update I wanted to give on the facility. And we have, we have walls in place. We have, we've been doing a variety of construction. I do have a video at the end of it. Just wanted to give you a couple of pictures last time I was here. This, we didn't have these updated pictures. The thing that's been done most recently is there's outdoor concrete being done for the outdoor portion of the facility. You'll remember that the facility is 60% interior, you're around, the exterior is about 40% of the swim space. And you see the, the freshly drying concrete in there. I believe that's about two weeks ago. So it's fairly new, and you're seeing what's gonna be the, the west wall of the facility. That'll be a glass wall with a blue, a little bit of a blue tint. And then the upper left, where you see the yellow, is where the 30-foot-tall slide towers are coming out. So you're getting a sense of scale of this facility. And once again, if anybody hasn't taken a tour, would like to renew that, just get ahold of me and we'll give you, give you a tour of the facility. Also glad to report that because of the design-build process that we've been going through, we've been adding betterments all along. The most recent addition was a Ninja Cross. This thing on the right retracts from the ceiling and is a competition course. There's two, two lanes of it, so people can compete against each other. This has been a very popular with the community. And just a kind of a list, this isn't an exhaustive list, but some of the things that we've been able to add because of this design-build process where the builders and designers open their books, basically, and say, "Hey, we're not gonna have to use all that contingency, we're gonna be able to release some of the money." So we've added things. Initially, we did a 10% larger in auditorium. We'd heard the community saying it needs to be a bit bigger. We're able to do a bit about that. We put a higher-end chlorination system in it for, for maintenance, added some lighting and skylights. There's also a rain cloud, thing goes off, you hear some sound, and there's gonna be some water coming out of a fixture. Going down the slides, there are some translucent light bands, for example. So a lot of experiential things. But we've also practical matters. We want to make this as automated, non-keyed system as possible. So we're a little, spent a little bit more on the access control system than with the base thing. And of course, then the Ninja Course. I, just future activities, of course, we have the ILA update, the, the small one that we've asked for tonight. Then the, the big one that I think we're talking about, want, want to talk about tonight is coming up, needs to come up, and I probably have done this out of order. Jesse, you probably wanted to talk about, I apologize, I wanted to do, or I was excited to talk about the facility.
As former mayor, you can continue. I'll object here shortly.
So we'll talk about that in just a second. And then branding and marketing, again, another example of Pasco has been a tremendous resource, and I'm gonna call him essentially a elder sibling to help us out as a, as a newer operation. There's been a staff members help us do a RFQ for branding and marketing, so we'll be working on that. And then we're also talking about commissioning it because we believe we're still on schedule for opening of Memorial Day 2026. Maybe a little question on the strike that happened, but we're, we're still aiming for the end of, end of May. I also just note there's a little wall in there that's a compacted earth wall. It's a signature piece, and there's some other version of that that's meant to represent a bit the geology of the Tri-Cities. So the colors and the textures, I think, remind me of a little bit of Tri-Cities. So things are coming along, and we're getting a built, facility built. And with that, then we go back over, and I'm gonna ask Ms. Rice to, to talk about what we want to talk about.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Watkins. So yes, this is a two-part presentation this evening, which Mr. Watkins has already covered and updated the construction of the Aquatic Center and progress they've been making so far. And as we, as when last time, Mr. Watkins presented, one of the, one of the key items that's still yet to be completed is that the PPFD Board needs somebody to actually manage and operate the facility. And they had several options to choose from, including going with a private company, which should basically run it for profit or near profit, hiring their own staff, or partnering with the City of Pasco. And based on discussions and, and several options, I believe the board has concluded that, in the city as well, is that the best management option would be the city to be the partner to manage that, and, and for several reasons as outlined on the screen. But basically, after a couple of studies we've done, we found the shared management operation, we, we could share staffing to reduce our overall costs for both agencies, shared programming to reduce duplication and competition between the Aquatic Center and the Memorial Pool, and that's particularly now that we're gonna be covering that soon. And also, just increased offerings to the community, having two facilities work together will really, that'll expand the offerings. Shared lifeguard staffing, including expanded training and certification. This is really a big one. All three cities struggle each year to recruit lifeguards, so having a fourth competitor for lifeguards would be very challenging. By combining together, we'll be able to implement an additional, an enhanced lifeguard training and also recruit additional staff and hopefully keep some of those lifeguards year-round, so. And then also, operating a cost versus private management, one of the goals of the Aquatic Center is to provide a facility that all those in the community could attend. So by running based on just solely on cost and covering cost operations versus worrying about covering, somebody that might need to run for profit will help reduce admissions to those in the community. And then just a centralized aquatic program will minimize confusion in the community. Having both in the community, looking for swim lessons, looking where to go, where to show up, probably be confusing by calling two different organizations. So, so those are some of the reasons why they think it may be the best, we, city might be the best partner to operate. And what would be required, as mentioned, is an updated interlocal agreement again. So we'll update the one we spoke about tonight and next week for legal services, and this would be an ILA that we'd need to update here in the next several months. But to kind of cover how that'd work is PPFD will cover all related costs to manage and operate the facility. And to identify what those costs were, we've had two independent financial studies completed, initially by Ballard King, who's known for aquatics facility studies. And also, we use one of our regular study providers, FCS, who's done many rate studies for the city as well. Both studies determine different rates of value return of revenue based on overall predicted attendance, revenues and expenses. And I think that was kind of expected because one of the reports is done sooner, we weren't aware that Memorial Pool would be covered, and then several factors come out as we continue to develop it. So, but both studies reflected that the Aquatic Center will be fiscally solvent and able to cover all operating expenses, including those of the city. And the updated ILA would outline direct and indirect costs paid by the Public Facilities District and include an annual true-up to ensure accurate costs and charges between both agencies. Here's some examples of the shared staffing that we'd use along with the city's aquatic program, and remembering that we'll be covering a Memorial Pool hopefully by, hopefully by November, is I believe what we're looking at now, but, so we'd be adding staff to run that year-round anyway. But in this case, we'd look at sharing aquatics division manager, supervisor and assistant manager, marketing coordinator, groundsman, and all the opposites of these, the 0.25% are what the city'd incur. So why PPFD pay for 75% of the aquatics division manager, the city pick up that 25%. And that reflects all the way down those. So total cost of that study, just for example, with benefits, the staffing would cost the PPFD approximately $535,000 a year. And again, these are for full-time staff, not including lifeguards, which would be a direct cost build to each, each aquatics facility, so. And then here's an overall kind of expense, look at what it was gonna cost to operate. And as you can see, we have both the Ballard King study and the FCS study here, why some of the numbers were different in between and what, between full-time, part-time utilities and things like that. Both studies did validate or came in very close within about $40,000 what the total expenses would be, which helped build confidence in those studies to show that we're on the right track for what the operations cost will be and if those are affordable with the Public Facilities District sales tax revenue, so. So some considerations, we're asking direction regarding city management, is that if city council is interested in having the city partner with the PPFD to manage and operate the facility, we will need a new ILA in place to identify these things we just discussed. we will need a new ILA in place to identify these things we just discussed. Due to the timeline of opening, we're looking to have an ILA in place and approved by the end of two thousand twenty five. And I will remind you that we have just generally limited meetings in December, so that's going to be approaching pretty quick. And then based on that, if we approve, well, about sixteen weeks to achieve several major steps, but the biggest one being full lifeguard recruitment, training and certification. If we don't have full lifeguard staff, we won't be able to open. That's where the combination of using the Memorial Pool Dome is going to be very helpful this year and trying to get lifeguards certified during that time. We normally wouldn't have a pool available. Of course, you need to develop a marketing plan and begin advertising, create all our standard operating procedures and policies, train or recruit higher than non lifeguard staff, developing programs, scheduling, and then set up and configure all our IT, financial and safety systems. So a lot to be done and it seems like a long time from now, May two thousand twenty six. But when you condense this down, you kind of see a need to continue to move forward as rapidly as we can. So our recommendation, hence any questions you might have, which we can stop and ask, would be approval moving forward with creating a new inter local agreement, making the city the management operating partner for the Aquatic Center. There are some alternatives we can consider and also some impacts. But before we go through those, are there any questions that myself or Director Watkins could answer this evening?
Right. Let's start off with Councilman Harpster.
Yeah, thanks. Slide seven. Says at the top there, based on several factors, PPFD Board believes the city is the best management partner option. That first bullet point, shared management and operation staffing to reduce overall costs for both agencies. So how would the city managing the facility reduce costs for the city?
Like in our example, we're expanding our.
But hang on, if you look at it backwards, the city's not involved at all. So there's no cost to the city. In this partnership, it's saying there would be a reduced cost to the city.
Yeah. So in our example, we are planning on running a memorial aquatic center year round, which is going to take an increase in staffing and probably if we didn't partner with them, need our own aquatics manager, some of our additional own full time staff. But by combining our staff with their staff, we can share in that staff potential. So without the Aquatic Center, we, you're right, we wouldn't, there wouldn't be any savings. However, I would be actually asking for probably some additional staff myself to to continue to run memorial aquatics programs.
Okay, that makes sense.
Okay, thank you.
Second question, said PPFD will cover all related costs to manage and operate the facility. Is that forever or is there a certain amount of time that they'll cover those costs?
That would be forever, but that would be additionally outlined in the inter local agreement. Yes, they they collect their sales tax percent forever. And that sales tax meant to cover operating and management expenses, capital improvements and expansions in the future.
Okay. It just the, I ask because we all know we're already using a significant portion of our reserves just to make our general fund whole. And so I'm just concerned that even though it seems like there's no total direct cost to the city, that there really is no direct cost to the city. Is that accurate?
Yeah, that's accurate. And it's one of the reasons we actually hired our own FCS study aquatics program, primarily due to the observation of Deputy City Manager Sigdel, because again, she wanted to ensure that they would be, sorry, Matt, financially solvent and that we wouldn't be trying to carry any losses they may have to continue to operate that center. So that was the need for both studies. They performed the one.
I can add that when we are operating and a completely different facility, especially with another partner, there are certain requirements in in accounting that will segregate that cost and all of that effort. So you'll be able to see with pretty good clarity on what it costs to run this facility. But also the board of PPFD would also require the same level of transparency to understand. There is a little bit of a risk at times for, you know, the same staff working on two different facilities, charging properly. And those are things that we deal with on a regular basis because the city, even though you think of it as one entity, has like twenty six different funds that are considered separate. And so our staff is pretty well trained on that element. So and we will continue that training to make sure that the costs are allocated in the right places.
Thanks. And then the last question, so that that alleviates that concern. My only other concern is some of our current staff, Director Rice, for example, taking on more work. I don't see, you know, a lot of staff members with available time for other things. So how would, what's the plan to kind of balance that additional workload if we move forward with this?
So I think that's what we're looking to create another aquatics division, which would have an aquatics division manager and those staff assigned to that for both agencies. So outside of at my time, which may be included in the ILA overall, but not listed here specifically, those other staff members, including finance and IT would be proportioned or hired. The challenging part for us is, say, an aquatics division manager, hard to find a part time, five hundred hour employee, whereas a full time, two thousand hour employee shared between both is will be much easier to recruit and retain.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for that. Let's jump to Mr. Ferguson. Do you want to make a comment on this?
I just wanted to also make sure that the council is also aware that the charter for the PFD clearly and in numerous places makes it abundantly clear that the city of Pasco is by no means a a financial backstop or responsible in any way for any of their projects, any of their work. So I don't have the exact language off the top of my head, but I can tell you that it's about as close to ironclad as you're going to see in a legal document. So it's it's pretty clear that the city is not legally on the hook for any type of expenses for their project.
All right. Thank you for that. I know on a side note, sometimes when I watch like online comments, people seem to think that we should be able to take money out of their budget to like for a road. To tell you, you know, we're basically idiots that we need to take money out of the aquatic center to pay for roads and why are we spending this money on the aquatic center? I don't know if we could ever make a statement or do something, but it always chaps me when I see those comments because like that's not how it works. But anyway, Director Rice, were you done or did you have anything else to say? Okay. So let's go to Mayor Protem Grim.
Thank you, Mr. Milley. Thanks for the presentation. Just a couple of questions as far as the funding goes. Just if someone would explain to me, what is a general fund allocated chargeout?
So as we identified all the individual positions and what those may do, there's also several overlapping staff that may include in finance, payroll or other things. So that general finance chargeout is what the cost of doing businesses would, which would be a proration, prorated portion, they would pay for those services. Whereas we don't have a specific payroll person that would be hired to do that or a specific IT person or a specific finance person. So or facilities and some of those other things. And we see those charges in other agreements that we use as well.
Okay, thank you. And then I, just as far as when we're talking all the operations of it, I mean, does that include, I mean, we're talking making sure the right amount of chlorine's in the pool and just every unforeseen, yeah, detail of it, I assume?
Yeah, it'd be a hundred percent managed and operated by the city. So all the opening hours, all the facilities, all the maintenance, yeah, all those things would be performed by city staff as the operating partner.
Okay, thank you. I guess, Mr. Mayor, I would be in favor of us doing that for some of the reasons given. I mean, I never want to see the government compete with private enterprise, but at the same time, it doesn't sound like we really would be. We'd be competing with ourselves basically at Memorial Park and it does seem to be the best cost saving way. Oh, pardon the pun. It just came to me to pool our resources together. Sorry, I am a dad. I come by that honestly, but that's terrible, to pool our resources together to ma- manage the the facilities better and like was stated in here to to keep overall costs down for for the people who want to visit and enjoy it. And I think that's a huge factor. I appreciate you considering it.
Thank you. Did you want to make a comment on that?
Just slight augmentation. Mr. Rice laid it out very well and I think you're the, I also want to thank the city of Pasco for the FCS study because by doing that, it also illustrated some details that we need to work on as a PFD. What this notion too is that since this relationship is going to be ongoing, we're going to, we have now a plan of what that looks like with specific details for staffing. Jesse's also shared extensively that it would be also a either six month or a yearly process where we go a true up process where we'd say, is this too low or is this too high? Because exactly as you mentioned, the aquatics facility needs to do the aquatics. City of Pasco needs to do the city of Pasco things. The two should not cross. They they are separately funded and for specific purposes. And we want to keep that line clear.
All right. Sounds great. I know I've been involved in this issue the last eight years. And initially I was hesitant about the city being involved, but now I think it's a hundred percent the right choice. It just makes sense. So I appreciate the, Director Rice laid it all out. Appreciate reading this. And yeah, I think that's our best interest to work when we can together to save on commodities and staffing and yeah, it's a.
And we, the PFD, appreciate that and would note also that we'd ask Mr. Ferguson on the PFD's behalf to initiate that ILA detailed update and and get it done before the December meeting for the council. We wanted to come to council first to make sure that you're on board with this. I'll do a similar presentation at the next PFD meeting and they'll be enthusiastically supporting this and we'll we'll run in parallel.
Okay. I think we're all on board on this. See some heads nodding. So it looks like we're unanimous on this. And again, it would be kind of nice to have the city put out like a little video that the taxpayers, you know, as far as how it's being funded, you know, why these are separate, I just think it would be good to put on like the Facebook page or something like that to show that these things aren't, you know, like losses and stuff like that. I just think it'd be good for the community to have an idea and then I could, you know, comment. I know Leo always comments on everything, but I could comment like, hey, go to this article.
I have a comment.
Oh, okay. Mr. Prowlles, did you want to comment on this?
Yes, right on cue. You just said I always have a comment and I do. I I I think we should pump the brakes on this. You know, I don't like being pushed into a corner here. I heard the comment, you know, this needs to be done by the end of two thousand twenty five. You know, we don't meet in the month of December that much. And well, you know, I guess my first response would be would be that we should have had this in front of us. In front of us about two months ago then, so that we can digest a little bit because, you know, I I have not been a supporter of us taking this over. I I think we're scaling up quite dramatically from Memorial Pool to this huge aquatic center. And so I have a lot of questions that I will issue on mine that I would like to get addressed and commented on. You know, and honestly, when it comes down to the money, I think I have an issue with that as well because, well, we're only going to pay twenty five percent here. But we both, I think we all know that that really doesn't happen. And then before we know it, hey, we need to use more money and or, you know, because I would push back and say, you know, the PFD can can foot the rest of that. And, you know, we're, we have a budget deficit and so we're, we are growing our government by taking this on and overseeing it. We're going to have to hire more staff. It could be argued that we should reduce staff, but I get and I get it. We're managing a huge facility. And it just comes down to also safety things that I don't, I want to see just a little bit fleshed out a bit. You know, in regards to the training of the lifeguards, you know, emergency, emergency action plans and just other stuff. I I just, I think this is a huge undertaking and I know it sounds like a lot of you in the chambers are in favor, but I I just think we, I I want to get some questions answered, obviously. If I'm the minority, I'm in the minority, but you know, I'm going to, I'll send my questions to to the city manager. And maybe perhaps we have a follow up presentation where some of those questions can be answered so for to provide full transparency to the community. I just, I I don't, I don't got the warm and fuzzies. I don't want to dip my toe in the water to use another pun on this one right now. So. Those are my stance. Thank you.
Okay. Well, thanks for the comments. I know being in the process from eight years ago, this really has came a long, long ways. Again, I was, we'll say I was against a lot of it, what we're hearing, where it would be like up against a, some like specific clinic where they would have weightlifting machines, all this, but it is totally different concept. I do trust former Mayor Matt Watkins where he's going. But yes, we do want your questions answered. So I would say schedule a meeting with city manager or any of the members of city staff. And I know Matt Watkins has also asked that if we would like to go out there and check out the facility, he's willing to give us a tour. So let's get involved and see what we could do to answer some of these questions and make this the best facility for Pasco.
Mr. Mayor, I hope we could proceed forward at at the same time that if Mr. Prowlles has any questions that I can answer, a PFD representative, I would imagine I could work with the city manager also any questions that Mr. Prowlles might have and see if we could work those in parallel and and still aim for a December adoption.
Well, I know time is of the essence. So yes, let's see what we could do to get this pushed forward. So I'm all for that. All right. And we have one for, let's go with Joe Cott and then I'll see if Melissa has anything to say.
Yeah, just a a comment on the attention that was given to organizing this so that you can have a consistent manager. I mean, somebody who can be there. You'd like to have a guy stay for a decade or however long it is. You know, obviously, if there's not enough resources to support somebody long term, it's not going to run as efficiently. And so I appreciate that.
Exactly. And I would note too, we we are in a very good situation. We've been fiscally prudent on this facility and spending the taxpayers' sales tax dollars as wisely as we can. We're excited about the facility and want it to be as sustaining as it can be. And we have full confidence that we're going to be have an open facility that the voters approved in two thousand twenty two.
All right. Thank you. Does Councilman Blaisdell, do you have any comment on this or any questions?
I do not.
Okay. Well, yeah, that's, if you do, just please chime in as we go along with the agenda. I'm not going to constantly go back and forth because.
And I don't know if you're at all interested. I do have a quick little video for, it's about a week old. If you'd like to see a zoom around drone shot of the facility.
Okay. Well, let's see what you got.
Also note too, in the foreground, imagine a a community center to the north side of the site to the left. Don't think it was looped, but you've seen the book that. May two twenty, two thousand twenty six, we're looking forward to opening it. Appreciate your support.
All right. Well, thank you. Thank you on that. Looks pretty impressive. And yeah, should be exciting. Five months, seven months, whatever. Do we have anybody in the audience that would like to comment on this? Not seen anybody jumping up on that. Let's go once, twice, three times. All right. Well, thank you for the presentation. Much appreciated. Let's jump up to number C, which is resolution office space leased at post office building. And this is also Director Jesse Rice.
Almost done. Good evening, Councilman Mayor. This evening I have a resolution in front of you for approving a office lease space at what we call our post office building, four oh three West Lewis and downtown Pasco area. It's office space currently in the basement location. To determine value of that space, we did work with our real estate agent to determine determine a market value as also as well as build in a annual increase to keep up with that market value. On your screen, you'll see a post office and the floor space pan with the, where the occupant will be renting that space. Monthly rent includes the annual increase as indicated and displayed on your screen. The initial lease is for three years with two optional one year renewal periods. In addition to all leases, the city must also charge a leasehold excise tax. So in addition to the monthly rent, you'll see leasehold excise, leasehold excise tax added to that. If the agreement is fully executed for, it'll be for a five year total of twenty thousand two hundred seventy four dollars. So staff recommendation would be to approve resolution, authorize a city manager to sign the lease agreement. And again, we have some alternatives that you could request some additional information from staff or of course, do not approve the lease request. So with that, I ask, are there any questions?
So before we get to other council members, are there other, I mean, are these other offices also rented out that were down there or?
We do have additional space. Yeah, the the this is the space we currently have available. There's another group that rents space within that building, including the post office themselves.
Okay. I've never been to the basement. I've been to the post office seventeen times, but so, yeah, let's start with the Councilwoman Brujas. That's what I said. Council member, councilwoman.
Councilmember Brujas, yes, thank you. So I do have a question in regards to article number four, use of premises. Now you mentioned this is one space available from several is what I'm picking up, correct?
There's two office spaces that are adjacent to one another within the center of that building, within the center of the basement. building, within the center of the basement.
Who do we have down there?
Uh, the addition of the other users, the Anatai Foundation. We used to be a group, I want to call them group Hells, but that not might be the right name. I think it was.
Anatai, yeah. Thank you. So in regards to our item or Article number four, it says the premises shall be used by lessee for office use and no other use or purpose without city's prior written consent. Even though they submit a request, what is the likelihood of, of the city issuing a permit for them to use the office, the space or anything other than office? Say there's a desire to put in a radio station.
I think as we, as we, as we identified in the, the use of the premises is identified in the lease as it's written, so how you're reading it is as written.
As written, okay.
And that was reviewed by Mr. Ferguson's office.
Okay, so no potential changing adding or changing the purpose of the rent of the space?
Not without your consent.
Okay. And then I had one other highlight. Oh, never mind, I'm good with that, thank you.
Okay, let's move on to Mayor Protem Charles Grum.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to thank staff for working and actually getting this filled. I know sometimes office space can sit there a while, so I'm grateful that we're able to find a tenant and get some income and, you know, add to the business viability of our downtown. So yes, I would definitely be for this, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
All right, my words exactly. Anybody else? All right, so with that, anybody, I guess we'll go back to Councilwoman Boraas.
One, one last question. I was not clear on the rent, item number three. What will the rent be? There's two different grants, so I wasn't too sure.
Sorry, so the actual rent, it will be a total of both the monthly rental rate and the inclusion of the lease excise tax. So on this slide as presented, you'll see the total monthly rent. It includes the, in the far right column, total monthly rent. So base rent per month, lease, leasehold tax, total month. So first year will be $318 per month.
Thank you.
All right. Do we have anybody in the audience that would like to comment on this? Going once, going twice, going three times.
I think we, Councilman Peralas may have his hand up for comments.
Okay, well, I can't see his hand from here, but let's, okay, just a little council joke. All right, Councilman Peralas.
No, I actually, I have my hand up for the other one. No, I definitely added this one. I'm glad to see a lot of business association. Hey, we're back in downtown again, appreciate it.
All right, well, thank you for that. Anything else? Nope. All right.
No, so with that, we'll bring this back next week on consent agenda, consent agenda for approval. Thank you.
All right, well, looks great. What's that? Already did. So let's go on to number D, resolution city retirement plans. And we got Director Mattson with the Z.
All right, good evening, Mayor and Council.
Can you turn on your microphone, Director Mattson? Thank you.
Is that better? Okay, I'm pretty loud. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight I'm presenting a resolution that updates and modernizes the city's retirement plans. This will not add any new cost, it simply puts the right framework in place so that we have more options going forward. Currently, the city offers a 457B plan where employees can contribute and the city also contributes. What this resolution is asking for or does is it updates and adds, it creates a 401A plan, which would create another avenue for employees to save more money for retirement. The city will continue contributing into the 457B plan for now. The 401A simply will give us a tool for the future if and when we decide to use it. Also, the resolution would create a 457F plan for the city manager. This is required by the employment contract. Instead of paying into the state retirement system, the city manager's retirement contributions will go into this account. Again, cost to the city, it's no added cost. The city manager contributions were already budgeted, they're just going to go into the 457F. And the 401A is free to set up and does not require the city to put money in it right away, or right now for that matter. Why this matters, this keeps the city competitive in attracting and retaining staff. Many cities and other public entities offer 457, I'm sorry, 401As. This also cleans up old outdated retirement stuff that we have from old resolutions and it gives us flexibility for the future without making any changes today. In short, this resolution modernizes our retirement plans, meets contractual obligations and gives us flexibility going forward. So staff is recommending that council approve the two additions to our retirement plans by offering a 401A and the 457F. The alternative is that council does not move forward with this. Any questions?
Do we have any questions for Director Mattson? I'm not seeing, it's pretty good, so thank you for their presentation. Do we have anybody in the audience that would like to comment on this? Going once, going twice, going three times. All right, so let's go on to E, consideration of deferral of water rights rate study. And we got our deputy city manager, Rachel Sedell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and evening, Council. Per council direction, a couple of years ago or a year and a half ago, there was a requirement to conduct a market value study or a rate study for water rights every two years. That is a part of our Pasco municipal code. The rate is essentially when there is no water rights for the development, whatever development that might be, and the developer would be paying fees in lieu of the water rights. So essentially requiring the city to go out, out to the market, buy the water rights so that we can serve that development. The rate was set in late 2023 and so we're due for that two-year refreshment. We discussed this with our subject matter expert, Dr. Darrell Olson, who conducted the last, last rate study for us. And he believes that the market factors have not really changed that significantly to change the number, which is currently at $4150 per acre feet of water rights or cubic acre feet. Is that right? Or acre feet? And a new study can be conducted at this time and we can still meet the deadline of the two years. The cost is going to be around $18,000. Given that the market factors have not really changed and even the subject matter is saying that he does not anticipate any significantly different number, staff is recommending that we skip this update for another two years unless there's something really drastic happens in the water rights market within those next two years. So at this point, we're looking for your direction to see, head nods would be great. So we can see if we can forego this and come back to you hopefully within two years.
All right, well, thank you for that. I thought the recommendation was good, we'd save some staff time and then $18,000. Obviously now is the time to be saving as much as we can, especially it seemed like it was not needed, but let's start off with our Mayor Protem Charles Grum.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No, and thanks for bringing this back to us, Ms. Sigdell. I know this was something we went back and forth on a lot. You know, five years seemed to be too, too long and then kind of we ended up at two years. I know we had even talked about three years and like the mayor said, I'm all for saving money and cutting out unnecessary time and work. Is, did he provide an opinion on whether he thought, because I know one of the timeframes we talked about was three years, that, did he really think, because now we're almost at four years if we wait at, you know, another two years? And that starts to make me a little anxious because then I'm thinking, man, for just $18,000, we could potentially be leaving a lot of money on the table. So, you know, being a politician, I'm always looking for the sweet spot, so.
When we were updating the rate late in 2023, the study was done in, by late 2022. So the study was maybe about a year, but even during that time, we had asked the question of, is the rate still valid as we're updating the rate? And it was. I think at least just with one experience, it's looking like the market doesn't move as much. That's, you know, but water rights, it's a really interesting realm, complicated, but also it's the new gold, I think. So we don't know exactly what the future will be. I think it's a good idea for us to continue talking with experts and seeing if the market is changing or not and keeping an eye on it. And maybe in the next two, three years, we'll figure out whether three years or five years or two years is the right time. And maybe that changes as, as things get more interesting.
No, thank you, Ms. Sigdell. I do appreciate that because this, I'll be honest with you, does seem pretty, man, it seems like we almost just got through that. And, you know, part of it, that was a big arduous thing. It hadn't been updated a long time. I know it was a huge, heavy lift for staff, we appreciate it. And I know the stakeholders were very engaged and obviously it was a big process for us and, um, you know, another two years seems like a long time. I would definitely be foregoing it, like for foregoing it, I'm still not going to say that right, like the mayor suggested, but another two years does seem a little long and I would be interested in maybe at least hearing from our SME again next year if he, you know, just has a feel for what the market is, but thank you.
All right, thank you for those comments. Let's go to Councilman Harpster.
Yeah, I would just express my support for staff's recommendation with skipping it for now and saves a little bit of money and, yeah, I deal with water rights a lot and would agree with Dr. Olson's take that the market has not shifted substantially in any direction over the last couple of years. And it's worth mentioning, he did our last study, presumably he'd do the next one. So if he's willing to say, hey, you don't really need to spend this money, that speaks volumes to me on that. I think, I don't even feel that we need to go with the second alternative of keeping track of the markets. I know you're already doing that, keeping an eye on it, so that's all I've got, thanks.
Thank you for that. Saw a couple of head nods, I guess, just for the sake of argument, Mr. Councilman Peralas, do you have any comment on this issue?
Yeah, I'm, I'm probably all of the same mindset of Councilmember Grum. I mean, it's 2022 is when the last council decided to change the policies and then we came in and I guess my, one of my questions would be is the current price that we have per acre, are, are we, are we held to that amount if we were to go out and buy water rights from someone who has them? And if that's based off this study, so if someone has 200 acre feet, we can only pay them $4150 for those 200 acre feet?
No, it's still a negotiation and as I'm learning quite quickly, not all water rights are created equal. And so even, even if they're the same, depending on which basin they're coming from, where they're coming from, there's, there's just too much complexity to the system. So in a sense, it is, it is a market rate which is an average. We've seen some water rights go as much as 10,000 acre feet, but there's a reason, there's a buyer who is willing to pay for it. And even for the same water right, it might not be as attractive to us because of our location. So, no, we're not obligated to buy every water right at this particular rate.
Okay, thank you very much. I would like to just, if I'm on the council here, maybe we'll talk about doing the study in a year or so, 2026, so that'll be three years. That's it.
Okay, I think we have some direction then. So do we have anybody in the audience that would like to comment on water rights? Once, twice, three times, all right. So let's jump to F. I know we have somebody online on this, but it's the resolution number 20, for 2026 Community Development Block Grants, the CDBG Program Allocation and Annual Work Plan. And again, we're going to go with, this time we'll go with Director Haley Mattson.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Tonight before you is a workshop item related to the Community Development Block Grant Program that the City of Pasco is eligible for. And this is the annual process for determining how the federal CDBG funds will be allocated in Pasco. Some background information here, the CDBG program is established at the federal level and is administered by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, also referred to as HUD. And these funds are given to cities eligible for this program on an annual basis. And the purpose of this program is to provide housing, a suitable living environment and expanded economic opportunities to the community. And the emphasis here for the primary beneficiaries is that these folks receiving the, the funds are required to be helping low to moderate income households in the community. And Pasco has had a long history of using these funds throughout the program and, and doing great things with, with these allocations. The process is listed here on your screen for where we, where we are today. We received applications for the CDBG funds in May and the application window closed on May 31st and staff had reviewed the applications for completeness. And in July, the Planning Commission held a public hearing where the applicants are present. And then in August, staff presented a recommendation to the Planning Commission. And this year, we provided three different options with a mix of, of options for the group to consider. Planning Commission did select option one and has recommended that the council consider approving that option and that, that recommendation is forwarded in the materials. When staff reviews the applications to receive these funds, we look at our local policies and council's goals and also with the consolidated plan for the Tri-City's home, home group and then also the CDBG and HUD regulations. And here on the screen are the allocations that are proposed under option one and the city is receiving just over $650,000 for this year's plan. And the, the different, different organizations are listed there in the amount, amount that is recommended for funding. So I will leave that slide up on the screen. Tonight's a workshop, so happy to answer any questions. I'm also joined by Kristen Webb, our CDBG administrator. She is online tonight too, so she may be helping with questions depending on, on what they are. So happy to answer any questions at this point.
All right, do we have any questions by the council? Let's start off with Councilman Harpster.
Just two questions. One of my concerns is that this is dependent on the federal government and them passing a budget that got to October 1st, last I checked. Obviously, the president's proposal removes both of these programs. Senate wants to keep both, House wants to remove home program but keep CDBG. And so I just want to ensure that if we approve this list as presented, there's no chance that we'd start on any of these programs until that funding is for sure. For example, the, the playground equipment, I'd hate to get started on thinking that the appropriate budget's going to pass and then it doesn't and then, you know, we're halfway through.
Yes, we absolutely wait until it was funded through this program before starting any of these projects.
Okay. And then the second point or question rather is the, the second line, their code enforcement officer, $70,000. I think we've discussed this before, I don't think it's prudent to spend grant funding on employees. And so the question is out of a full-time employee or a part-time employee and maybe an employee that already exists or a new position that's being created?
Sure. Kristen, do you know exactly how this is allocated to the code enforcement officers by any chance?
Yes, so that actually is, it is for a current employee and it is for the employees that goes into the low to, low to moderate income areas in the city. And code enforcement actually is an eligible expense. So I believe for budget reasons, which I could be over speaking there, this is what they've always done.
Let me just make sure I heard that right. This is what they've always done, there is.
Yes, if I may, historically, there's been actually more programs than just the code enforcement, like in the recreation.
I remember that.
And, and we've removed and revised that to give more funding to other, other efforts. Code enforcement is one that is remaining. It is not an additional position that the grant is funding. We have one code enforcement officer, I believe, right now and essentially their salaries supplemented by this grant funding, very much like in the past, the recreation staff that were funded via this program. The recreation uh staff that were funded via this program. Um, it was not that it was above and beyond that we were hiring additional recreational staff um because of the grant. We're just supplementing their income and now general fund is paying for for that part of the.
Okay. So we just so make sure I understand, the general fund, we've already counted for the cost of that employee. This just helps kind of offset some of that.
Exactly.
Okay, thanks.
All right, um, any other council discussion? I know, looking at the list, it looks like, if I'm reading this right. You had a request for one point two nine uh million, and again, there's only allocated six hundred fifty thousand, so. Obviously, we got a comment from upwards wanting to reconsider. But at this time, there's, looks like there's only so much, so you're actually getting less than half of the request. Would that be pretty much?
Yes.
What you're saying, okay. Just wanna make sure, so I mean, we're not trying to take anybody out or. You know, obviously, daycare and other things are very important to us. On the other hand, it's hard when you only have so much money. Do you want me to comment on that?
Um, I just wanted to clarify, we have two code enforcement officers currently, but um the explanation that um reach I gave was was accurate.
Okay. Let's go back to Councilman Harpster.
Yeah, I did just, I forgot my notes. I I wanted to thank the uh Planning Commission for their time spent on this. Appreciate that the meeting minutes were included in our report. They did, I I think I watched about half that meeting live, and they did spend a a quite a bit of time on this discussion. Helpful for us, then we only have to spend, you know, five minutes on it this evening. So, thanks.
Good point, good point. All right, um, yeah, so. First of all, go with anybody in the audience that have a question on this. Going once, going twice, going three times. Let's. Uh, do we know if she's uh this Melanie uh uh Farr? Is she uh? Still online? I know she did send us comments, which I think we all have. We're not seeing her online. Okay. Do we have uh any of the council that would like to chime in? I'm trying to move along quickly, but if you'd like to. Make a comment or have a suggestion, please do so now.
No, Mayor, thank you.
All right. Okay, well, with that, um, do you need direction or are we good or? Stick a most often one?
We plan to bring it back for a formal decision, I believe, at the next meeting or the one after, if there's a noticing requirement.
Okay, just wanna know if you need like shaking of heads or something like that, but uh I guess we'll keep moving right on then. Um. So we're gonna move on to G, which is Resolution for the Twenty Twenty-Six Home Investment Program Allocation Work Plan. And also by Director Haley Matson.
Thank you, um, Mr. Mayor, and good evening, Council again. Tonight before you is the annual work plan for the home um consortium program. And the city has been a participant of this program along with Kennewick and Richland since nineteen ninety-six and. Um, this makes the city eligible for federal home investment partnership program funds. And this agreement was recently renewed through December twenty twenty-eight and for um. Uh, the city of Richland is serving as the lead agency. So the estimated amount for Pasco this year is two hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars. And um these these funds are regulated by by HUD. I mentioned that during the last presentation. And for Pasco, staff is recommending that the funds be allocated across the three eligible activities listed in your packet. That would be for the Down Payment Assistant Program, also referred to as CHIP, the First Time Home Buyer Program. And this helps low to moderate income households purchase homes. The second option or the second um allocation. That's being recommended is to the Tenant-Based Rental Assistant Program. And the this is rental subsidies that help households afford rent and utilities, and the third is owner occupied rehabilitation. So it's important to clarify here that council is not approving the funding itself. This is a part of the program. And the amount allocated to the city is is determined through that. So tonight's um. Uh, purpose of tonight is to um determine which activities the home funds can be used for in Pasco as as outlined in the packet. Um, so staff is recommending um the the distribution as proposed within the packet. And we believe it meets all the federal regulations and our local um uh stance as well. So happy to answer any questions if you have them.
All right. Do we have any members of the dice that would like to comment on this or have questions? Let's start off with Councilman K.
How does one apply for these benefits?
Um, Kristen, would you like to help answer that question?
Um, yeah, so we actually have online applications as well as paper applications. And um most of this is just advertised on a website. Uh, or we do advertise also on our Facebook uh social media.
How is eligibility determined?
Uh, it is, uh, it is determined by income, so we have a uh formula that we have to calculate per HUD. And it's all based on income basis.
Thank you.
All right, Scott, do you have anything else to say? You have your lights still on? All right, uh, I'm not seeing anything else, so anybody, do we have anybody? Melissa or Leo, do you have any comments on this or questions?
I do not.
Okay.
I do not as well, thank you.
All right, well, thank you for that. Do we have anybody in the audience that would like to make a comment on this? Going once, going twice, going three times. All right. So we'll move on to item H, which is Resolution Ordinance Section One O Eight HUD Loan Re- Refinance and Budget Adjustment. And we got interim director Garcia.
Good evening, Council. Also, before you, we have a proposal for a interfund loan and a corresponding budget amendment. Uh, related to a loan that the city received back in twenty twenty-one um from HUD. Um, and it was for the Peanuts Park project. It was for a little over three point seven million. And at the time, the was though is it's a variable loan rate. Uh, so, and as you just saw with the CDBG um allocations. There is an annually allocations that are um supposed to cover the debt service for that loan. Um, however, over the past few years, because of the variable interest rate. Um, the that allocation hasn't been sufficient to cover the interest um and the principal payments. So uh general fund has had to subsidize that and cover the the excess on interest. Um, and over the past three years, that subsidy from general fund has been around two hundred ninety-nine thousand. So we um have worked with HUD um for a few months last year to try to fix that interest and restructure the loan. However, that effort was paused early this year. Uh, so we are uh now at the point where we can, we've been kind of waiting because it was. You know, expected that it was going to re- resume. Um, however, that hasn't happened yet, so. Uh, we feel it's in the best interest that we essentially refinance that loan internally and pay off the loan with HUD. And we are able to fix the loan uh here internally and have a uh reduce the subsidy that's coming out of general fund. Uh, so our recommendation is that we uh move forward at the next meeting with a the resolution. To establish the interfund loan and the corresponding budget amendment. And the alternative would be to stay as is and pay that uh variable rate.
All right, well, I know saving money is uh definitely what we want to see. So, anybody, I've not seen any lights chiming in. Um, not seen any thing from our online council, so. Do we have any members of the audience that would like to comment on this? Going once, going twice, going three times. All right. Look forward to seeing on the next council meeting. So let's go with section I, Resolution Ordinance Officer Wellness Program. And amending to twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six operating budget. So we are gonna go. I guess it was Ken Roski, but I guess we'll go with you as well.
Captain Harpster.
Captain Harpster, I know who you are, so, but thank you.
You bet. Good evening, Mayor and Council. So before you, uh, we've brought you a resolution and ordinance for an officer wellness program. Uh, the resolution would be to accept the grant funding that we were awarded. And then the ordinance to, or the, yeah, the ordinance to amend our operating budget. So the Placca Police Department was awarded a grant funding for, to enhance our current officer wellness program. The funding opportunity we were, we applied for was for thirty-seven thousand five hundred dollars. This is a no-match grant. And so the funds that we would spend, we would be reimbursed by the state from the Criminal Justice Training Commission. So. Um, I'm here for any questions. If you have any questions about this, I can answer those for you.
All right, let's start off with uh Mayor Pro Seven, Charles Grim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to say thanks for looking out for your officers first and foremost. Um, we appreciate, you know, finding grant money and everything too, but always, you know, officer safety and officer well-being is at the forefront of our minds also. You know, obviously, along with the public too, but appreciate you looking out for your crew there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for those kind words. It's, I think, yeah, everybody in the council says thinks the same thing, so, thank you. Do we have any uh from the online council that would like to comment on this?
Yeah, I'm good.
No, Mayor.
Okay. All right. Thanks for the presentation. Anybody in the audience that would like to comment on this? Going once, going twice, going three times. All right.
Thank you.
Looks like you're off the hook there. All right, so we are moving right along. So we're on item J, Resolution Award Bid Number Two Three Four Six Seven. For Schlegel Park Storm Water Main Replacement to Big D's Construction of Tri-Cities. We got uh Public Works Director Maria Sarah.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. We are presenting to you a bid award, and this is for action next week. Should um you concur with this recommendation. The bid award would be to Big D's Construction of Tri-Cities, and that is for the replacement of a stormwater main. It's a forty-two inch water main that um exists within the Schlegel Park. Um, area, and it sits in an Eastman from the Corps of Engineers. The uh renewal of the Eastman with the Corps of Engineers requires us to do analysis on um the condition of that pipeline. And it was found that there were root intrusion and some of the prior linings of that main had failed. This main serves an area um that is shown in your packet, actually. It's one of our basins which eventually discharges into the river. So it is important that we uh perform the repairs and replacements. To be in compliance with the Corps of Engineers, but also to avoid further damage of that pipe with potential for sinkholes, for example. So the bid um was published and it was publicly open. There were six valid bids. The lowest one was from Big D's Construction for an amount of five hundred and six. Two hundred and thirty-three dollars with eight cents. That is lower than our engineer's estimate. And there were a total of six valid bids and one non-responsive additional. So seven in total, one was not responsive. Um, again, our engineers in, our engineers estimate was uh just over five hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars. And this project is fully funded with local funds. It is through stormwater rates, and there is a bond that has been issued to allow for this work to occur. And then be repaid through rates. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Anybody on the dice have any questions on this? Well, I know we've used Big D's before, and they seem to do a good job. Great name, by the way. Um. It is a pretty good name, Big D's. Uh, but anyway, so um. Do we have anybody from the audience that would like to comment on this? Well, that's going twice, going three times. All right. Look forward to seeing that on the agenda. Let's go with number K. So ordinance and resolution amending the PMC sections to modify start dates of certain city boards and commissions. And updating recruitment process for city boards and commissions. And we are gonna go with our city clerk, Deborah.
Thank you, Council. Um, as you know, I don't usually talk to you, but I'm gonna be carrying this baby for Ms. Pashon tonight. Uh, to hopefully get it over the the threshold, so we can um have it uh some action done on October sixth. Which is the next council meeting. So as you recall, um, Ms. Pashon brought this topic before council on mid mid-August. Um, and discussed possibilities of making some changes to the recruitment process for our boards, uh, for your boards and commissions. As city boards and commissions. So uh when you discussed that, you said to go forward and council did, I mean, the staff did. And they identified some opportunities to provide some streamlining of the recruitment process. And to help em- emphasize predictable timeliness, um, reduce administrative burden. And also improve the onboarding pr- uh process for new members. So as you can see, um, the the result was uh we're we're supporting and wanting council to consider. Transitioning to a semi-annual recruitment cycle. That would be in the spring and the fall. And also um prior to advertising the upcoming terms. Have the mayor and his uh selected subcommittee for the boards and commissions determine if eligible incumbents. Um, require an interview, and if they don't require an interview, then we would contact the incumbent. To see if they're willing and wanting to continue on, and then that incumbent would just go on for approval. Without having posting that that position, because as you know, some of people are interested in applying. And then the incumbent takes takes that position, so that would help alleviate that. And then, of course, um, we are also considering or having you consider modifying the start dates of the city, some city boards and commissions. Um, so that that would align with that semi-annual recruitment process. So some uh boards and commissions would have a start date of January first, and others, the other half would be July first. So you can go to the next slide, please. Thank you. Oh, we already talked about that, so the next slide. Where, uh, okay, so we talked, no, let's go back one. Where's the slide with all the boards and commissions? There we go. So those are the boards and commissions that uh we're considering um an adjustment to their start dates. Thank you, Jesse. So um if you want an example of what a recruitment cycle would look like. We would take like the September um cycle where we're looking for uh filling vacancies for the following January. So at that point, we would um confirm the subcommittee from the from the mayor. Um, propose interview dates and onboarding, and then in October, we'd actually advertise for the vacancies with the marketing campaign. Which um would provide a better outreach, we believe. And then in November, uh, this council subcommittee would conduct the interviews, and the mayor would make the appointment. And we would place those on uh the council agendas for the full council uh confirm confirming those appointments. And then what's really nice is in December, we'd have a group of people um from a variety of different backgrounds. And we would meet with with the uh staff liaisons of those um new board member, new board or council. Commission members and the city clerk to do onboarding, which would be a nice enhancement. So um. The impact for these would create efficiency. It reduces recruitment cycles. Um, from a multiple of times throughout the year of recruiting uh to two planned cycles. And that helps free the council, because you would know the dates or the approximate month when you would be doing uh your interviewing and such. It provides consistency, uh create, well, I said creates that predictable process. And then preparedness, um, aligns recruitment with a structured onboarding schedule. And ensures new members are ready to contribute effectively. And then as we go on this process, of course, we will continue to look for improvements if improvements are needed. So your, the the staff is recommending that we both do both items. Um, a resolution adjusting the recruitment process uh to semi-annually. And then also um an ordinance of changing the PMC to align those um. Count, uh, those boards and commissions' start dates to a January and July item. However, um, council, it's at your discretion, alternatives. You could leave the start dates as is and approve the resolution for the semi-annual. Um, recruitment. You could also do the opposite. You could approve the ordinance of modifying the dates and then keeping the recruitment as is. Or you could do nothing. You could keep it status quo. So I'm just looking for um your guidance. And we'll bring this back um on October sixth if everything's been A-OK.
All right, well, I like the improvements. I think it uh worked really good for us. I mean, it's a lot more simple. It makes sense. Uh, you know, like uh efficiency, that's uh number one thing is city. It makes sense. Um, you know, like uh, efficiency, that's uh, number one thing is city government should strive for. So, or one of the things we should strive for. So uh, I'd definitely be all for a change in that. I would say like a lot of times in November, we got a lot on our agenda. Would uh, do you think that there would still be problems to get all this done when we're trying to wrap up at the end of the year?
Um, well, we'll try that this first year. I mean, we're already a little, if this moves forward, we'll be a little, a few weeks behind the eight ball, but I think we can do that. Um, that's our goal.
Okay, okay.
In working with you. And so the first thing we'll need to do is find out who you'd want on your subcommittee this time. So that, that would be two council members or, and/or a mayor pro tem.
Okay, well, let's uh, see who has the questions or comments. So let's start off with Councilman Jokata.
Do you know why the staggering was done to begin with? Is, are there maybe some justifications that are now obsolete? Or what was the justification there?
To the best of my knowledge, it was, you know, they, many of these boards and commissions have been uh, around for many, many years. You know, the planning commission and um, that's just one example. And so I think it's just when they actually started their, their jobs on that commission or that board. So over the years, they've just started at different times.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, I'm Mayor Pro Tem Grimm.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Barham, it was not lost on me that you said you were carrying the baby for Ms. Pashon. Everybody else may have missed that, but I see you over there. On a, on a more serious note though, ma'am, I would definitely before, before all of these um, changes. And um, this has honestly been one of my favorite parts of council, like um, the mayor was alluding to. Just how many of these process changes, efficiencies and staff time we've been able to save partnering with staff. You know, us giving recommendations, you guys bringing us ideas. And really, over the last two years, it's been one of my favorite things, just streamlining processes. Like you said, Mr. Mayor, and us just getting more efficient as a city. So thank you for bringing this one to us and tha- thanks again for the humor.
Thank you. And as you know, to, next Monday is a fifth Monday, so I don't think there's any council meetings planned for next week, so.
Correct, correct. Yeah, we like that. Uh, especially since I'll be out of town, so I'm pretty scared. Um, are you asking to have, like, if we get some volunteers on council for a subcommittee or?
If you'd like to go ahead and um, set your subcommittee tonight, you can.
Well, hopefully we could get uh, the newest member, Jokata, and our mayor pro tem Grimm. If they could be on that uh, committee, that would be great, or?
That would be fine. Um, I'm going to be out of country on October 6th, or sorry, leaving the 8th, coming back the 17th. Um, that's my only um, conflict.
So when are, when would this meeting uh?
Well, I think the very first thing would be uh, looking at those incumbents for you, for the subcommittee to see if you want to go ahead and reappoint them, if they're eligible to be reappointed. Um, that would probably need to take place right away so that then we can um, move forward on the recruitment process for the other um, the other positions that don't have somebody coming in.
Okay. So like, within the next week, you would like them to?
Well, um, we'd need to come back on the 6th and um, you guys approve this process and then probably the 7th is when I could, we could meet. And um, with the subcommittee, they can, you, since you're not a quorum, you can meet um, virtually. So that wouldn't be a issue.
Are you good for that, or?
I'm happy to serve at your disposal, Mr. Mayor.
Don't hear that often, so thank you on that. All right. So we got a, we got two members that are willing to serve, so thank you. And do we have any other comments? I'm not seeing any. Um, anybody from the council chambers that like to make a comment on this issue? Once, twice, three times. All right, so that rolls us through that. So we're gonna move on to number six. Miscellaneous council discussion. I'm not seeing anything. So let's start off with our city manager, Harold Stewart.
Uh, just one item this evening. I believe our park director has some data and statistics from our Fiery Foods Festival. So I'd like to have him share that and then I don't have anything further updated, completed.
Okay.
I'm gonna surprise you with two items since you gave me control, so, thanks. Uh, so good evening, mayor and council again. Uh, yeah, want a brief update about our Fiery Foods event, which was held in the previous week. Uh, we were able to get our metrics to determine our attendees and also share some other different, additional information with you. So approximately 2,400 people attended Fiery Foods, which is comparable to the previous year. Um, we had about 40 vendors signed up uh, through a range of food and informational and um, retail sales. And we featured four food eating contests this year. Uh, two rounds of hot pepper eating, one for our community VIPs, which Councilman Peralis participated on and made it pretty far, and then one open to the community. Um, uh, both of those, uh, we had first place winners that went all the way through the end of the Carolina Reaper, plus a couple more to help do a tie break. So those individuals have heavily punished themselves for the wonderful medal we provided and other gifts. So very entertaining in that. Uh, we also added a hot wing eating contest this year, which was solely sponsored by Wingstop. So we appreciate their contribution. They provided several hundred wings and several rounds of competition for that. Uh, as well as added a taquito speed eating contest um, at the very end of the festival. All those seemed uh, very well received by the community. So we hope to expand that next year into maybe a uh, commercial salsa contest. We're hoping to recruit about 10 different restaurant vendors to uh, contribute salsa to have a salsa tasting contest. So staff are already working for next year's event, so. In addition, we had, of course, several music, uh, musical entertainers as well as kids. So I think it was a very good event. We hit the perfect day of the week for the weather, unlike uh, some of our other events we've had this year. So appreciate all you that came out in attendance, appreciate all of our sponsors and all the staff time that made it in there. And for those that you, that have been here for a while, you know, I always track my steps. I had a little over 28,000 that day, so about 13 miles. And no scootering. I didn't have time to scooter anywhere, so those are all real steps. So. Uh, appreciate that, um, reside that update. And then also this Saturday, uh, at Tri-Cities Animal Shelter, we have our felines and fighter fighters adoption events. You can come on down and see some of our local firefighting heroes. I believe we have uh, City Kennewick, City Pasco planning on being there. Plenty of pets in stock. Come on down, they're only $50. Take two for a hundred, whatever I can do to help clear out that shelter. Appreciate the community's help in adopting some wonderful pets. So thank you for that.
All right, well, thank you. Thank you for all of your work in trying to adopt these cute little pets. Um, yes, we need people to step up and uh, adopt a little dogs and cats that don't want to. It's pretty difficult being at an animal shelter and with all the barking and stuff. So again, thank you for putting these things together and thank you for your work on this issues. Um, with no other lights, I guess we got one light by Councilman Harvester.
Just a quick comment. I believe Councilman Blaisdell is our representative on the Visit Tri-Cities Board. But um, one of the sort of bummers of the Ironman being here in town is that it doesn't come into Pasco at all. And um, but it goes through Richland, Kennewick and West Richland. Uh, they revised the course compared to last year and this year. And so I wonder if it wouldn't be helpful for uh, Ms. Blaisdell, maybe others from the city to uh, contact Kevin Lewis at Visit Tri-Cities and um, just petition to maybe alter the course again so that it comes into Pasco, you know, at some point. Um, and like I said, we, Pasco agencies, they're uh, assisting, but it'd be really nice to get some of that traffic in here and um, be more of a, a full-on Tri-Cities event. So it felt more like a Richland event. So um, just some food for thought.
No, it's a great idea. Thank you. All right. Well, I'm not uh, seeing any other lights. And anything else from uh, Peralis or Blaisdell?
No, Mayor, I've done that.
All right, well, thank you for that. At least we know the stage of the end. So we got a exact session. I'm not seeing nothing. So jumps us to number eight, which is adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for staying here. Meeting is adjourned.